All right, our regularly scheduled special meeting of February 8th is in session. Any changes to the agenda? Oh, you wanted to add?
I wanted to add to make some announcements tonight that some of us got some deadlines this week that people need to know about.
Any objections? And we'll add an item D for announcements. Anything else?
Could we just have, even though it's an announcement, one up front?
Pardon?
Could we just have an announcement up front, even though it's an announcement? A short one. A happy birthday to our infamous beloved colleagues.
Birthday boy, huh?
Anyway, so, and that way I can announce to anybody that's here there are refreshments that people are welcome to have.
Oh, okay, good. Please.
And the other is, Jim, do we need to do something with regard to bomb council tonight as far as inaction?
I don't, I don't think so. I saw some emails this afternoon from Mr. Farman, but I think he's prepared to just move ahead.
Yes, in response to my suggestion to put it on, he said they were gonna move it.
Yes, sir. The answer is that you don't need to take any action.
Just wanted to see before we, if I needed to add it to the agenda.
No, sir.
All righty. In that case, the agenda is approved with that modification, and we're on our first item, item A, which is a discussion of ammonia.
Mayor and council, since we might have some people staying home tonight on a cold night watching us, I don't know how big a crowd is out there, we're on TV, I'll do a very quick introduction. Littleton, the city of Littleton, in partnership with our sister city Inglewood, since, what, Charlie, nineteen seventy?
It opened in seventy-seven.
Nineteen seventy-seven. The two cities have co-owned the By City or Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant. I believe we are still about the third largest wastewater treatment plant in the state of Colorado. We serve actually an area ranging, really, the entire, almost the entire south metro area, ranging from I-25 to Ken Carroll and the Hogback, actually an area that's two-thirds larger than the two cities. In the late seventies, EPA, under the Clean Water Act, was encouraging regional approaches to wastewater treatment, and there were a lot of smaller treatment plants. Inglewood had its own, Littleton had its own. There are several special water and sanitation districts that provide service, and with a large grant from the EPA, the two cities went together and built a regional plant. So we serve not only just the two cities, but probably a population of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? Stu, does that sound right?
Two-hundred and fifty to three-hundred.
Two-hundred and fifty to three-hundred thousand people. So it is a major operation. The two cities, though, are the, have ownership and have to work with the state of Colorado, the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission and Division, and the Environmental Protection Agency in terms of complying with all of the environmental regulations that have been adopted by both the federal government under the Clean Water Act and state regulations. In the issue before the council tonight, in terms of increasing regulations promoted, promulgated primarily by EPA and then subsequently enforced by the state of Colorado, we have, we are facing, we have, we get permits for people that may not know, we are under permit system with the state of Colorado, and every five years, we have to go through a process to update that. The regulations increasingly get more stringent, and the issue tonight is we are facing in our current permit to meet some more stringent ammonia standards by 2014. The planning for this, in order to comply with these more stringent ammonia standards, we've had outside engineering consulting that are recommending a treatment process. There are varieties of treatment processes to ensure that the plant does not fall into violation. The recommended technology is called ultraviolet. The Littleton City Council and the Inglewood City Council met in a joint session, I believe in December, in December, in a joint session, and had a briefing on this. We are at a stage in 2011 where we need to be moving forward with engineering and implementing this new treatment system. At that session, members of the city council asked for more information on this specific technology that was recommended, and subsequent to that, the council was provided with a technical memorandum. It's an evaluation of alternative disinfection methods to comply with these new ammonia limits. That was sent out to council, I think, about three or four weeks ago. And so tonight is a study session to allow the council to ask questions about this, this particular technology. We do have people in, both representatives of the Inglewood city staff, the general counsel for the plant, David Robbins, who has been our legal advisor for many, many years and deals with many regulatory issues, and representatives from Brown and Caldwell, who's been our consulting engineers in terms of plant expansion and trying to comply with EPA and state regulations. So I think with that brief introduction, Mayor, we have technical people here tonight that are prepared to address any questions that council may have in the memorandum. There are plant staff here to talk about the operation of the plant. Mr. Robbins is here to talk about any permitting, compliance issues. So we're really, I think at this point, the, the technical team can either go over the points in the memorandum and explain more of the technical details, or if council has specific questions, we can start out there. So I think with that very brief overview, we'd like to know what council's preference is here.
Brothers, counsel?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
A broader question.
Sure.
I'm thinking I'll know the answer, but I had asked in regular meeting if we could get a legal opinion whether or not the governor's executive order relating to mandates might apply to the, to the plan.
Mr. Robbins, did you hear the question? All right, then, if you don't want to, if you want to respond, please either come up so the, because we are televised live, so we can get you on the mic. Dr. Cole's question, incoming governor, and I'll repeat it for the people watching, newly-elected governor Hickenlooper issued, I believe, an executive, a gubernatorial executive order about a month ago indicating that his administration was going to look at unfunded mandates, and Dr. Cole had inquired as to whether that executive order might have any effect on our, our permit or the compliance protocols with the Colorado Water Quality Control Division. This is David Robbins, who's general counsel to the By City plant.
Doctor, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether Suzanne has more in-depth knowledge about this than I. I've reviewed the order. It looks to me like it was rather carefully drafted, and initially it applies to new or future decisions being made by state government, not to existing decisions that have been made by state government. Our permit has been in place now for over a year. Those conditions, I do not believe the conditions in the permit would be affected by the executive order as it's currently written. I would point out-
Suzanne, did you have a comment on that in terms of the governor's executive order?
No, I don't think it's gonna override what's in the permit and what the requirements of the permit are. I'm not sure the order said, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I think it talked a little about notice and without collaboration, and I'm not sure it was actually saying you can't have an, I mean, I guess Tabor says you can't have an unfunded mandate, but I think it was more about the notice requirements to local governments to work with them on these unfunded mandates. But in any event, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding, some of these were EPA guidelines as well, so that further muddies the water because they're federal rather than state.
These are water quality standards that, that this plant is, is being, is required to meet, and they are by and large standards that are adopted by the Water Quality Control Commission, but they are also approved and required by the Environmental Protection Agency, so.
I just thought that the state group had some discretion on certain things, but, but at least you've, you've addressed your understanding whether that mandate would apply.
Yes, ma'am.
Even if it were a new mandate, so that's a different question. Thank you.
Certainly.
Figured we should know the answer before we decide.
Yes, ma'am. Look like Bruce.
Well, no, go ahead. Actually, I was, I was probably gonna go down a different path than that, but.
Go ahead.
Well, okay. I remember, it's gonna, I did look at this document, and I think we got it back in December, so it's been a while. The hard, and I think as we, as we all discussed at the breakfast meeting at the, the plant back in December, it, it truly is a conundrum by virtue of the fact that we're meeting some pretty stringent requirements today. The requirements that are continuing to be imposed may or, well, in all likelihood, don't necessarily bear a direct relationship or don't take overtly cost into account in terms of what's required to, to get to the point where the standards are met. So I guess what would be really helpful would be some sort of general discussion as to whether this is an all or nothing. I understand the UV or ultraviolet light is, is the recommended approach. Based on what I'm reading in here, I guess I've got a couple of just specific questions, but ultimately, the, the comfort level I'd like to get to is that we can't get eighty percent of the way there for twenty percent or fifty percent of the cost. If the UV system is ten million dollars, which was the number I recall, and it's gonna get you to a certain quality level, is there any way to do, what are the other alternatives that are potentially out there that may or may not have cost-benefit trade-offs? For example, just a couple of questions come to mind. In this document that we got from Charlie, there's a discussion in here that talks about, on page five, it says monocloramine is the preferred chemical for disinfection due to the taste and unpleasant taste and odors of dicloramines and trichloramines. But if you could put up with the unpleasant aromas, could you get away with using dicloramines and trichloramines in the process for substantially less than ten million dollars? Tragically, I wish now I'd paid somewhat more attention in high school chemistry.
So, counsel, let me just, counsel, Kirk Petrick, who's the supervising engineer with Brown and Caldwell, and I think also John Bratby is a process engineer. Kirk, in terms of these sort of technical treatment trade-offs, would, could one of you come to the table and perhaps address these questions with councilman Stallman? Who would you prefer to have come up, or either, either one or both of you?
There's two microphones.
Just, just come to a mic and maybe just engage. This is a shirt sleeves, this is to inform council, they're not making any formal decisions tonight, so this is education for them. John, why don't you, this is so we can get you on the mic because we're on televised live, and so really, this is to engage in a dialogue. This is Kirk Petrick and John Bratby, both with Brown and Caldwell, and they, John, I think, was the principal author of the technical memorandum, so.
Well, that's, that's one, and I, we appreciate you guys being here to have the conversation.
Sure, so go ahead, and they can, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, that, no worries. One of the other questions I was gonna have, just in, in sort of thinking about this whole thing, it probably isn't feasible for a lot of reasons, you guys understand that I don't, but you've already got chemical processes in place, so what happens if you cycle the water back through the same chemical process two or three times to try to get more of the material out with the existing system? In other words, longer exposure to it, I would think, could potentially have beneficial outcome versus putting an entirely new system in. God only knows if recycling it would cost less than ten million dollars. I have no idea. But those are some of the types of, of thoughts that I think we're all sort of struggling with here in terms of, how do we get to some level of accommodation with EPA for something less than, you know, seven figures? Or eight figures, I guess.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'll just start off, John, and maybe you can explain a little more on the chemistry and more of the process, but, you know, the, obviously, the management objectives for wastewater treatment facility is to maintain that water quality downstream. So you have to meet those compliance, those numbers, that water quality all of the time, basically, and that's really the premise for, you know, what the plant does and how you operate a plant is. You know what, the last thing we can do is pollute the river downstream and kill a bunch of fish and, you know, for, for everybody else, so that's really where you start at. And then in that, you know, you try to go through with the design, you try to, to basically come up with the most cost-effective process that you can. And when it comes to disinfection, in this instance, you know, right now, they use chlorine, and for example, back in the nineteen ninety, you know, we looked at, they had chlorine gas, and they went to the option of going to liquid chlorine, and basically, it was a, it was a good decision back then because they got rid of the issues, the safety risks with chlorine gas and the, you know, the five-mile perimeter where, you know, if they have a leak, it basically, that's the kill zone that you have to report to. So they went to this, and it was a temporary system, and they've been doing, they've been operating this liquid bleach system for approximately twenty years, and now with the new regulations comes, comes out, the question becomes, you know, can you ensure a hundred percent compliance, you know? And that's the difficulty in trying to say, if you had, if you don't, only need to meet it on a, you know, a monthly average basis or something like that, then it becomes, there's trade-offs with that, but when you have to meet a chlorine residue or chlorine permit, that it's instantaneous, the moment that you have a chlorine, a little bit of chlorine leaving the plant going downstream, it's highly toxic, and it's an instantaneous violation that results in a permit violation. And so with that being said, that's the premise on, okay, how do we ensure, you know, a hundred percent compliance all of the time?
We're a hundred percent compliant now, right?
Correct, well-
Existing standards.
Yes, with, with, you have a very few exceptions.
Okay, there's always gonna be.
There's always an upset or something like that.
But what changed was the amount, the, the small amount that was allowable today is getting even smaller in 2014.
That's correct.
Okay.
And what's a little confusing, this whole issue, is that, you know, the new mandate from EPA in nineteen ninety-nine that says, okay, we've got new lower ammonia limits, all right? The state adopted them in two thousand and nine. Okay, so we're talking ammonia removal, all right, versus disinfection, so it's a different process. And the good news for Littleton-Inglewood, when we, you know, is that as far as the ammonia numbers back in phase two, and we, you know, did this, we upgraded the plant and had to add some other processes to it, the ammonia, we didn't touch the ammonia limits. We said, you know what, we're gonna wait and see what happens to these numbers, and when they came out, is, the good news is, you know what, we don't have to add any more ammonia removal facilities. And basically, that's across the state, what's happening right now is that people are in the middle of, okay, now we've got a, what are we gonna do here? Metro spending two-hundred million dollars in complying with the ammonia portion of it.
What do we put, you're saying when we expanded the plan in, did you say oh-five?
We started design in oh-two.
So the ammonia system's been in since, this existing ammonia system's been in since oh-two?
This system has been in since, what is it, eighty-six or something?
Oh, you said twenty years. Okay. Okay, so it's, so it's been, chlorine's been in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, it would've been about ninety, where we put the, ninety, okay.
Okay, okay.
And so, and then basically, what the, the issue is with the new ammonia limits is, you know, it has an impact on the disinfection system, and that's where, if, if you have further chemistry questions, well, I'm gonna defer those to John.
Well, I'll, I mean, I'll just, this, again, I guess to your memo, there, there is a relationship between chlorine and ammonia, and I'm just reading that and I'm not stipulating it. But what is the difference then, if monocloramine is preferred, could you get away with a different chemical cocktail, even if it's not ideal, and get to the same outcome, and it be cheaper to handle it? You know, I, I mean, I, in, under ideal laboratory conditions, so to speak, I'd prefer to deal with unpleasant taste and odors for dicloramines or trichloramines if that's the only issue, and it would still get us to the point we needed to be at. Will it?
Well, the, you're correct that the chemistry of chlorine is, is quite complex. The whole issue with mono and dicloramine, trichloramine, is that if, if ammonia is present, then the chlorine will react with the ammonia and form, you know, these, these sequential species, monocloramine, dicloramine. The idea is to make sure there's enough ammonia there so you don't get into free chlorine or what's called breakpoint chlorination. The reason you don't want to get into breakpoint chlorination is just it costs a lot of money. You have to, you have to react with all of these other components in the water before you get to free chlorine. Chlorine, by the way, is an extremely effective disinfectant. It's highly toxic, and that's why it's effective to, to kill the bacteria in the effluent of the wastewater treatment plant. There are just some control issues about it. So operating with monocloramine does not represent a higher cost. It's more a question of maximizing the effectiveness, maximizing the effectiveness of, of the disinfectant. If there is not enough ammonia present, then what happens is that the chlorine preferentially reacts with organic compounds in the water, you know, irrespective of taste and odor and what have you, but those organic compounds with chlorine then do not have disinfectant ability, and that is the whole challenge of operating the plant and the controls and that we, that we address there, is that if there's enough ammonia present, then it will form, you know, either mono or dicloramine, it'll form a, a combination of those. The majority of the species will be monocloramines, very effective disinfectants, very stable operation, and, but if there's not enough ammonia, then all sorts of issues occur.
And you're saying you can't put enough ammonia into the system because it'll start exceeding the 2014 standard for what's coming, what's in the discharge?
Yes, it, it's, it's not that it's impossible, it's just that it becomes, there's a higher risk of violating, violating the permit.
But if, I mean, that's the hard part, that's the, the trade-off issue ends up being, really, what is the risk? I mean, is, are we talking about the risk of an excess discharge daily, weekly, annually, semi-annually?
Yeah, it's a little difficult to quantify, and, and the reason is, is that, for example, some, some of, some of the incidences that have, that have occurred are due to some unknown illicit discharges, and, and, you know, the, the treatment plant personnel are working hard to try and identify where these discharges are coming from, because what happens is it knocks out the, knocks out the nitrifying organisms that convert the ammonia and so that, so that they can meet the ammonia standard. So the issue with adding ammonia, or bypassing ammonia, or adding ammonia to, to enable the chlorine to disinfect effectively, is that if that, if that illicit discharge happens at a certain time during the month, and you've already predetermined what the effluent ammonia needs to be for chlorination, it, it makes it very difficult to meet that monthly average because you don't know, you know, if the ammonia suddenly goes up to ten or twelve or twenty milligrams per liter, then it makes it very difficult for the rest of the month to average out and meet the permit limit.
How often do you guys, do they experience an illicit event like you're describing?
Well, Dennis can answer this better, but I know of at least half a dozen in, you know, in this last year, or last couple of years.
About three to, three to four a year.
This is Dennis Stowe, the manager of the, of the plant, and responded to the councilman's question, three or four illicit discharges per year.
For how many years?
Been occurring over the past, I would say, four years, about, maybe a little longer than that.
John, when you lose the nitrification, then you exceed the ammonia anyway because the nitrification is what's taking out the ammonia, isn't it? Well, the, the permit limit is, yes, there is a max day permit limit, there's also a, a monthly average permit limit.
So when you say the denitrification, losing the denitrification affects the disinfectant process, if we were to inject ammonia, losing the denitrification affects our permit anyway because we're not removing the ammonia?
Yes, it does. What I, what I was saying is that if you're, if one is adding ammonia for, for chlorination, for effective chlorination or chloramination, the, the challenge becomes, how much ammonia do you add? So, so if one has an ammonia set point of, say, you know, maybe two milligrams per liter for effective disinfection, and then the plant gets a hit, and so for one or two, it doesn't, it doesn't actually destroy nitrification for an extended period, but it destroys it for a few days. It kind of knocks out, it appears to knock out the nitrifiers without killing them outright. But what happens is that that high ammonia for those few days when that occurs- But what happens is that that high ammonia for those few days when that occurs will mess up the, you know, the average for, for the month. It makes it very difficult to meet the ammonia standard while you're trying to meet the fecal coliform or the bacterial kills.
So how often do you measure the ammonia?
It's measured continuously.
So wouldn't you know if you lose denitrification, when you lose denitrification?
You, you do know when you lose nitrification, but, but then you have to predict what's gonna happen for the rest of the month. So if you have a set point of, say, two milligrams per liter ammonia, you know, I'm not saying it's impossible to do, it's just highly challenging and, and the plant has had some violations. The control system just becomes very complex. So if you get a hit of nitrification during a certain part of the month, then you have to compensate for that for the, for the rest of the month. And then it's very difficult to meet the, the chloramination requirements. That's, that's kind of the difficulty, it's sort of a balancing act. And, you know, nobody can really control when these hits occur.
And you, they don't, you don't really know when, what's causing.
Right.
Speculation.
There's been some speculation. I don't think we've gotten very far in really identifying the causative agent.
Our pretreatment group has done a lot of work in the collection system to try and find the area where we believe this discharge is happening. And we have, we've been able to narrow it down somewhat, but we haven't been able to identify it. And there was a time when it, it looked like we had an impact as we were doing an investigation, and then we went for a fair period of time without having what we call an inhibition event. They've started recurring again at that three to four times a year rate. And what, what we do is we notice the, the nitrification stops, ammonia goes up, and we have, we, we put in place procedures where we modify the plant operation for several days to try and minimize that impact and recover as soon as we can.
So I guess I'm lost here because if you lose denitrification, you have to make modifications to the plant operations anyway, or you'll exceed the ammonia standard for the average of the month. If you need ammonia for the desirable disinfection process, what you're saying is if you lose denitrification, you get more ammonia and that screws up the chlorination process. But if you lose denitrification, it screws up the ammonia process anyway and you already have to make adjustments. So I'm having a hard time with why going, turning down the valve or pulling the lever or whatever adjustment that you have to make if you lose denitrification now is somehow unacceptable if you continue to use the chlorination system, which you already have in place now and have had in place for 20 years.
Well, the issue is meeting an ammonia limit, meeting fecal kills, and there are three, three things in play that are regulated by the state. The first is the effluent ammonia. It's a monthly average and a, and a peak day. The other is the E. coli or the fecal coliform or the bacterial kill that's needed for the disinfection. And the other is excess chlorine in, in the effluent. So those three things have to be balanced. And the way the plant does that is with pretty sophisticated instrumentation and a sophisticated control system using oxidation reduction potential. And if, so, so for example, if, if one is adding ammonia to make the chloramination effective or the disinfection effective, and let's say the set point is something like two milligrams per liter and it's summer, if the plant gets a hit and nitrification, which they can't really correct, they just have to wait for the bacteria to recover. There's nothing really that the plant can do essentially to, to correct that. The ammonia goes up in the effluent. Let's say it doesn't exceed the maximum day value. If it exceeds the maximum day limit, then there's really nothing that can be done. So then what you have to worry about then is the rest of the month to, to, to report the monthly average effluent ammonia. So at the same time that they're trying to meet this effluent ammonia, they're also adding ammonia. And so the tendency would be to stop adding ammonia because I've already taken a hit. So my ammonia average is gonna be higher. But for chlorination, I need to add ammonia for the, for the disinfection to be effective, if you see what I mean. And that's where the complication arises. It's not that they can do anything to correct the, you know, the ammonia or the nitrification. The fact is that right now with the system they have, which has worked well for many years, it's just that as the ammonia limits are ratcheting down, then it just becomes, you know, there's just a higher risk of violation. But that's the balancing act.
Okay, but if, so the nitrification system hasn't changed since, for some years?
Yes, it's '92.
Okay. And the chlorination system has been there since 2003. So there's been no change to the systems in either one of those two areas. All that's changed is a lower limit.
That's correct.
But you're, I mean, you've been functioning with this whole loss of denitrification and continuing to chlorinate and functioning okay for the last 20-some years.
That's correct.
So...
So now you're, you're, you're sort of framing the issue, but now we have the lower ammonia limits.
But you, but you're not changing the ammonia part of the system at all.
Well, you are. You're, you're, you're changing it to a point where you have to operate at a lower, we try to put through a certain amount of ammonia to the disinfection system, okay? So that we have effective disinfection. And then what happens is now we have a lower ammonia limit. So that point, that, that amount of ammonia that we have to regulate to is lower, and then that's where the rub comes in. That's where it's all of a sudden, it's like, it's, it's very difficult to keep that and make that complex loop and all the instrumentation and controls to ensure that you can comply, to continue to comply with, with that disinfection.
To put it, to say it another way, if we didn't have the lower ammonia standards being kicked in, we would probably not be in here in front of you tonight. That is the whole driver, is what is the additional risk? You're right. We had, it has been working, but how do you do all of this balancing and calibration that John talked about in meeting the new ammonia standards? If we didn't have the lower standards, we would not even be having this meeting. How much lower are we talking about? I mean, what, what's the ammonia standard today? Is it in terms of the output and what is it going to? And why?
Cook, did you wanna?
The ammonia limit right now varies actually monthly. Anywhere, I think from, well, the low is around 4.2 or 4.5. And in the future here, with the new permit, it will be down to 3.1 parts.
Parts per million?
Parts per million. Milligrams per liter.
At what flow rate?
It is at, at 3.1, it is at a 50 mg/d flow rate.
But at a, so you're at a, you're at a what now, a 4.2 now?
Yes, on the low. I believe that's the case.
And at a...
And these are, we're talking the...
At a 35 million gallon, 34 million gallon permit, it's 4.5 milligrams per liter, which is actually higher than what the current permit is that we have. So it's actually relaxed.
Well, that's, then that's, that's, that's not, I have the incorrect numbers if that's the case. It is definitely lower at a, a tiered limit at 34. And so I've gotta look at the existing permit, but it's definitely lower.
The number's there, but, but it is, it is lower. I actually have the numbers there.
Do you have them, John?
Wait, you said the 4.2 is at 50 million or 35 million?
Current is 4.5. And then the 34, it drops to 4.1. 42, it drops to 3.8. Current is 4.5 milligrams per liter. And then if you, the new permit at 34 mg/d will be 4.1. And then when it goes to 42 mg/d, it'll be 3.8. And at 50 mg/d, 3.2.
So you've gone down four tenths of a milligram per liter.
That's, that's, is what we recall as pretty close.
Okay.
We were thinking it was one part. I gotta look at the original, but we were thinking it's basically dropped one part.
Okay. And, and you need one milligram or two milligrams for effective chlorination to get the monochlorides. So that's less than half of what your limit is. And the new change is four tenths of a milligram.
Right. So, so, so the treatment goal will be, you know, obviously lower than, than the, than the permit limit. So the plant will be, you know, for one reason, to account for some of these excursions, but just on a statistical basis, they will treat, you know, somewhere in the region of maybe 70, 75% of that limit. So, so the plant would not be treating to 4.2, it'd be treating to significantly lower than that to make sure that they, they meet their permit.
And what will you be treating to? So 75% of 4.1 is... Yes, three. So, but you only need one to two for effective chlorination. So what you're telling us is your process, even with the new limit, and what you're planning to treat it to...
Right.
Would still be effective.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of twists to this thing. And, and, you know, as I said, it's, the, the plant has treated very well and they do a great job of, of meeting all of these different requirements. It's just that, excuse me, certain difficulties in control arise that have caused, you know, a small number, but a number of, of permit excursions or violations. One of the things that also occurs at the plant, is phenomenon of, of, of this plant, is that in summer, it actually does too good a job of removing ammonia. So as they're trying to blend a high ammonia stream with a nitrified stream to make sure there's enough ammonia for chlorination, they find is that this bypass stream actually has very little ammonia, it doesn't have any, you know, it doesn't have appreciable ammonia. So that blend is, they're not able to do that blend in the summer months. So sometimes it does too good a job in terms of chlorination, of, of removing the ammonia, and then the control system, this oxidation reduction potential, control system goes haywire. So, so, so the whole point of this thing is, is not that the plant is not able to do it and it's imperative that they change what they have and invest in a UV disinfection system. I think the point is that it's proven itself to be a challenge to be completely reliable. And so, and so the issue is, you know, how much risk is acceptable? How many violations are acceptable? If, if the approach is to be a zero violation facility, then, then the, you know, the system is inadequate. And it's not because there's a basic flaw in the system per se, it's done an excellent job all of these years, it's just there is a better alternative. Debbie?
Not to try to simplify this, but if we weren't seeing these illicit discharges that were kind of messing with the chemistry, would our current system be able to continue to work adequately? I mean, are we responding? Is this a $10 million response to violations happening, illegal dumping into our sewer system is essentially what we're probably looking at here? In which case, have we considered ramping up the investigation of this as opposed to, I mean, I'd just as soon put a million dollars into investigating that problem as opposed to $10 million to correcting, almost over-correcting.
No, I think that's an excellent point. But I think the important thing to, to, to note is that is only one of the factors. It's not actually the determining factor that, that prompted this, this study. The determining factor, I think, is more the, just the, just the general difficulty and some of these phenomena that, that, you know, that we've been discussing here of, of just trying to control the chlorination system. You know, there are a number of other, this is, this is one of them. Certainly that's, you know, that just makes it more difficult. But, you know, I think the, I think the plant personnel have been looking to the future too. And in terms of what needs to be done in the future, invest more in the system that, that's existing, or look to possible future regulations and, and, for example, if nutrient limits are imposed on the plant, and, you know, it's a very real possibility, and apart from ammonia, the plant has total nitrogen limits imposed upon it, then I think certainly they'll be looking towards putting in something that does not require you to add nitrogen if you have to meet a total nitrogen limit. They're not in place right now, so, you know, that, that's why we didn't sort of bring it up before now. But, but these are, these are all factors that, that have, I think, that lean towards this system. It's not that it's an imperative, but all these factors weigh towards the advantages of this, of this system of disinfection.
And I, I am ignorant on this issue in terms of Inglewood using, I know Inglewood treats its own water. Do they treat it at the plant?
Both Littleton and Inglewood treat their wastewater sewage at, at this plant.
Where is Inglewood's water treated at?
The drinking water?
Yeah.
Stu Fonda, the director of utilities, is there a microphone for Stu? The, the question from Councilwoman Brinkman is, we know Inglewood has its own water utility and where is the treatment plant?
The treatment plants are about Leighton and Windermere.
So the two plants are completely...
Completely separate.
Separate. Do, are they, does Inglewood need to treat their drinking water with an ultraviolet system or they...
We will have to do that for a totally different reason. The ultraviolet, we have, there's too many Giardia and Cryptosporidium cysts in the river. And when you reach a certain number, then you have to convert to ultraviolet disinfection by EPA edict. So we are in the process of designing ultraviolet filtration for the water system also so that we can get adequate kills with the cysts, which chlorine does not give you an adequate cyst kill.
So they are putting an ultraviolet system in their treatment, their water treatment?
In the water treatment, yes.
They're doing that now?
We're, we're in the design phase right now.
When will that be?
About the same time the wastewater, we have to have it online around 2013.
So is the wastewater ultraviolet related to their water treatment ultraviolet?
Totally separate and they're being put in for different reasons. The reason, basic reason, I think as John was alluding to for the wastewater plant, is that at these low, the levels are getting so low, you can't, you, you cannot control the process adequately. And we have to go, when we talk to the regulatory agencies, we're going to have to say, this will do it all of the time. And we simply can't. It's reached a point where the control is, is not adequate to assure that you will not have viol, that many violations. Numerous plants are converting for that very reason. However, with the ultraviolet, this is not an issue anymore. So the regulatory agencies are looking at it and saying, you can choose the one that's going to work, and we know it will, or you can choose the one that... or you can choose the one that probably won't work, and we're fairly sure that you'll have numerous violations. In which case then, they won't be very happy when we violate. They, they come down very hard on systems that, that have the alternative like the UV and don't do it.
Thank you, Stu. Phil?
Series of questions, so bear with me on, on some of this. Start a little bit with a statement that hopefully you can either correct or, you know, but I think what I understood from our Bi-City meeting with, with Inglewood is that the EPA has the luxury of putting down compliance standards without considering the cost of compliance. And that the Water Quality Control Commission that exists at the state level is essentially the EPA is willing to let Water Quality Control do their job. If they don't, it moves back up to the EPA and they'll impose their criteria regardless. And they may not be as forgiving on some extensions and, and that. So it, at least part of what I came, came away with is it's kind of a, a better thing to work with the Quality Control Commission that's there. I kind of have a, you know, a, a simple view, which is, you know, it seems like what we're doing now is it's damned if you do, damned if you don't, a little bit, and following that approach. We're basically losing, using some approach to clean things up. And the problem is, is, as much as we screen it and we don't screen it, that some mornings we're apt to use a little too much soap and it runs through the system. And that's not acceptable. And the problem is if we try and control that, we don't know whether we're going to be able to control that, given some of the studies that exist out there in being able to do that. Kind of got it? Two questions that I, that I have, one doesn't have to be answered at, at the moment, but one I'm a little disturbed with is when we did have the, the Bi-County or the Bi-City meeting, there's a waiting that went into your analysis that was done with the plant folks. And I don't think we necessarily got the justification for all of that. And that was one of the questions that was there. The second question is, is, is one I'm, I'm more frustrated with, which is, if I've, if I've read the paper correctly, it sounds like the long-term cost of operation in adopting a UV technology is less. It requires less people to maintain it, it's going to require less chemicals to be infused, it, it, it becomes more reliable. And what's not in any of the analysis and still hasn't come before us, but is still my question, is what's that long-term savings? What's the commitment that's going to be made so that if we went through any kind of additional cost, that there's actually going to be savings long-term? And then the third question that comes up in my mind is regardless of whatever cost happens, how does that get recovered knowing that this isn't a public service that is funded by the state? It's not funded by the feds. It's basically something that's going to be borne by the service area. But answer the question, please, what's the commitment on long-term savings? Because it says there's less people that are going to be needed to maintain the system. We're going to have less cost in the system to, to do this because we're not infusing chemicals. And indeed, what, what is, what is that going to be and what's kind of the time flow on that?
Yeah, in fact, following that joint council meeting, Stu asked Brown and Caldwell to look at a preliminary number. Until the design is done, you can't really get the true numbers. But we did look at the O&amp;M costs, operations and maintenance costs for the existing system, which is the chlorine. Your basic cost for that is chemical cost, chlorine is quite expensive. And then on the UV system, your basic cost on that is power. And you have approximately, because the, Littleton Inglewood has actually a very good rate with Excel, you don't see as much as what's typical in most, in most installations. But it, it will range from $75,000 to $90,000 annually in O&amp;M cost savings to operate a, a UV system.
So that's just the cost of the chemical, but?
No, that's, that's everything. We, we factored in, you know, we looked at, okay, maintenance costs and hours and, and, and that. So that was the preliminary numbers that we had to make a number of assumptions on. But it was approximately $75,000 to $90,000 in O&amp;M savings.
Kirk, how much, how much does an engineer at the facility cost?
You mean, as far as salary goes?
Salary and benefits, full cost.
Yeah, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Dennis answer that, I'm not sure.
Excuse me, could you repeat that, please?
Well, okay, as, as I'm reading through it and I'm, I'm looking at some of the discussion that's there, is that it indicates there's a savings and personnel required to maintain the system. Okay, I'm having a hard time believing, I'm sorry, but I have a hard time believing that the cost of chemicals plus even just one body is only $75,000 a year.
Well, the, the offsetting the savings that you get from the chemicals is the additional power cost. So when you factor in all the costs of the system and what we'd be saving, the total net savings is what Kirk mentioned.
Basically, what was calculated in the, in that O&amp;M cost was if you had to do, for example, bulb replacements, how long it takes to do that, how much time it takes to go out there and do a, a cleaning on those bulbs. So that's with the new system versus the cost of the existing system is how much time they spend operating it, delivering chemicals, operating the system. So that's what we tried to put a number on. And so we were at approximately 75 to 100, or $90,000 in, in annual savings. Typically, what we've been seeing in other plants is about half of the cost. And this is a little bit in cost savings to operate a UV versus a chlorine. So you save about half, a chlorine, existing chlorine system costs twice as much as a UV system. With Littleton Inglewood, because of the better power rates, it actually isn't as much. But it's still substantially less.
Okay. Is there a commentary which I didn't find, other than the waiting was established by plant personnel on the weight factors and evaluating the different alternatives?
Can you restate your question because I?
Yeah, I, Phil, I didn't see that reference to waiting. Can you give us a site on that?
Page 15, Table 4, says quantification of non-economic factors of disinfection alternatives. It has that first column after the parameters is titled weight factors. Okay, the footnote, or at least the commentary on the prior page, talks about the weight factors were reviewed and revised in collaboration with the staff, provide a general overview of each alternative.
And then is your question, how do we arrive at that or?
Yeah, where, I mean, where, you know, what's, what's the logic or is there a commentary somewhere around the, the weight factors?
Yeah.
These are, these are to a certain extent subjective, right Kirk? And so the procedure that we follow with this, with this sort of study, and, you know, maybe Dennis wants to talk about this too, we relied a lot on, on some of these issues with, with plant personnel. So for example, you know, what is the magnitude of the difficulty of this? How important is, is one of these factors? So for example, bacterial disinfection would have the highest weight factor because that's the prime objective of the disinfection process. And as you go down each of these, safety is always, you know, relatively high weighting factor because, because it always is. Transportation costs, costs, costs are a little difficult in a table of this nature because costs are covered in the economic analysis. But, but yes, you know, quite frankly, there is a subjectivity to this. But, you know, it's, it's a considered opinion, basically.
On page 20, on the economic advantages, you actually say that UV disinfection is not as cost-effective as chlorination. But costs are competitive when chlorination, dechlorination is used. So.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So that's, doesn't jive up with you guys saying that your experience is that chlorination is twice as expensive as UV? And I've got another report from Environmental Technology Institute that says that almost the exact same thing, that UV is more expensive than chlorination. But when you add in dechlorination, then the costs become basically comparative. So if, if I take the words from your own report, there isn't a cost savings with, with UV.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very good point, Mr. Mayor. But, but I think the important thing to note is that one could never do chlorination without dechlorination. So the two sort of go arm in arm because of that chlorine limit. So basically, any chlorine that's added for disinfection, that needs to be completely purged before discharge.
For wastewater?
For wastewater, yes.
So, so basically what you're saying is in the report that UV disinfection is the same operating cost as chlorination, dechlorination for wastewater?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done a number of these, actually Kirk is the better, certainly the better person to answer. We've done a number of these, particularly in Colorado. And, and I understand that the UV disinfection system has the edge on chlor, dechlor.
Yes, it does. At least that's what we've been finding lately, is that the UV is becoming much cheaper to operate, about half the cost. And I'd my point.
You've been finding that since August 2010?
Well, with the recent, we've done a number of projects lately and afterwards, that's what they've been finding. And even with our preliminary.
So you've been doing projects since August 2010 and you've been finding that the operation costs from the projects you've done since 2010 are cheaper? And we're in January of 2011, so you have 10 months of operating data?
No, it's, it's been over a few years. I mean, as far as the operating costs, that's what we've been finding with the projects that we've been doing.
Mr. Shenanek, other questions?
Well, the, I guess I would have liked to have seen some demonstration on that, on the cost savings so that we could maybe look at the detail a bit more on that front. It was a question that was asked at the Bi-Cities meeting. I'm very frustrated that we haven't seen it. So my trust level on, on the material is, is not high. I see the various different approaches. I understand some of where you're at with regard to UV maybe being a more reliable technology. I'm not sure if, if zero is, is, is the standard we, we should meet. But also on page nine, I don't know if you were talking about excursions being there. But on page nine, there are some spikes that occur. Again, the measurement period is August of 2007, so I don't know if that is something that's, that's material. But I, I, as you've done some preliminary investigations on the spikes or the excursions, what are, what are some of the hypotheses? I think the mayor asked the question, or excuse me, Debbie asked the question, if, if we, you know, spent more time on investigation of some of that, do we find a way to, to meet and address this that alleviates some of the reliability concerns that are there?
I'm not, I actually don't remember what these excursion, okay.
One of the guesses would be quaternary ammonium compounds. And they're used in cleaning solutions, industrial cleaning solutions is one place where you find them. We have some, we've done, we've done some studies that would indicate that those, that family of chemicals would have that inhibition effect on our nitrifying bacteria. But we, we haven't been able to track that down. So that's one, that's probably the, the one that we most commonly talk about when we're trying to track it down. We just recently had an event where we actually caught a good sample and that's offered a lab being tested now. When we get the results of that back, we'll see if it provides any more information and gives us any hint as to what we should be doing.
I know that one of the, at least items that is claimed is a lot of the household detergents that your general consumer might utilize for clothes washing or whatever has had phosphate elimination. Basically, the producers of that have, have done that. It's taken a lot of that. It doesn't take the phosphate that groundwater picks up out of the system. But it does take the, say, consumer additions to what ends up being in the affluent flow down. If there are ways that we can somehow eliminate those spikes or move through those, I mean, you know, I have to imagine that there's, we're not the only folks in the state that can say, you know, that are having some of that, that problem with, with those particular chemicals. But maybe it's a state-level legislation and prohibiting those kinds of chemical use can address some of that issue as well.
You know, that's possible, and that's not the only situ, this nitrification inhibition situation is not the only situation where what you're talking about occurs. When you have, I mean, it's clothing that is resistant to developing body odors. The way they get that effect is to add silver into, into the fabric. Well, that silver will slowly come out of the fabric as you wash it. And there are restrictions on how much silver you can discharge. So there are many situations where consumer products have additives in them that we simply can't discharge.
That's it for now.
You know, I'd be happy to also, we have that report on the O&amp;M costs. I'd be happy to, you know, it has a full report on it too, if you'd like to see that.
Yes, please.
I'll be happy to get and send it to Stu.
First, walk me back through what, what's the, what's driving the reduced standard for? Where, where does it, I understand the EPA is doing something and they've studied something and somebody's decided it needs to be lowered. But what is that process and is there any public input or commentary? How did this come to, to pass that basically, we're, we're sort of sitting here saying, well, we've just got to hit a standard as opposed to saying, why did this stand, why is this a valid standard that needs hitting? I guess is a question.
Oh, in the 1990s, Colorado had what is called the Colorado Ammonia Model. And that was a program, a model that calculated what ammonia limitations you could have, you would have in your permit so that you wouldn't have toxicity to aquatic life. In 1999, the EPA issued their, what they call their 1999 ammonia criteria document, which outlined a different way of calculating those limits and determining ammonia toxicity. Colorado took its time adopting those, that criteria, went through a fairly lengthy public process, a series of hearings in front of the Colorado Water Quality Control Commission. And what, what the commission adopted is what's called AMTOX, ammonia toxicity, the AMTOX model. That model actually lowers, it says ammonia is more toxic than we thought in warm water and it's less toxic in cold water. Well, the South Platte River is a warm water stream, 714 is warm water. So our ammonia limits went down. As part of that public process in the state of Colorado, even though the federal legislation doesn't allow economic considerations, state law does. The Division actually did a cost benefit study on that regulation. And they, they determined, the Division, Water Quality Control Division, determined that it was cost-effective to implement the new lower ammonia standards. the new lower ammonia standards for warm water.
The State Water Quality Board determined it was more, it was cost-effective to do that? Based on what criteria? What is their definition of cost-effective, I guess? Because, I mean, they're not paying $10 million to make that happen.
You're going to make me be polite right now. You're going to make me be polite. The Water Quality Control Division has, under regulation, has direction, if they are requested, to do that cost-benefit study. By the Division's own admission, they don't have economists on staff, so they did their own study, and what they did was they estimated the cost of ammonia removal facilities that would need to be installed, and then they estimated the savings that would be accrued from an environmental standpoint, and that was primarily aquatic life. This Division estimated that revenues, the cost of aquatic life in Colorado is about a billion dollars, it was $957 million a year.
You're talking about tourism and sport fishing?
Fishing, anything associated with water.
So, how much of that billion dollars is in Segment 14, out of curiosity? Never mind.
I said I was going to be polite.
Well, all right. So, I guess the question, the ultimate question in this sort of line of inquiry ends up being, what recourse do we have before we have to start writing $10 million checks to basically push back on the determination that it's cost-effective to do something for some minuscule amount of fishing or aquatic life in an urban environment that's a heck of a lot different than a mountain fishing environment, I guess is where I'm going with this whole thing? I mean, I, I'm not trying to denigrate wildlife, and I support environmental regulations that, you know, are applied intelligently. I guess I'm struggling with somebody stipulating that what we've got to do in this segment of the South Platte River that runs through a highly urban environment, and admittedly is warm water, has dropped $10 million to improve what? Yeah, less ammonia means, how many more fish are we going to have in that segment of stream? I don't know.
Well, quite frankly, this, the Division's cost-benefit study took credit for the entire value of fisheries and aquatic life in Colorado. There was no incremental cost associated, but they didn't say it's going to improve by 20%. So, instead of the billion dollars, it would have been 200 million. They didn't do any kind of a value judgment like that. So, it was the value of the entire fishery.
Well, which, you know, like I said, but we're on the hook for Littleton's share of half of the expenditure theoretically, to put in a UV system that doesn't have any impact to the vast majority. So, I mean, from a cost, their cost-benefit analysis is one thing, our cost-benefit analysis is something completely different. So, I guess my question ends up being, is what latitude do we have to push back on that? Is there any? Like litigation?
Well, in the case of the ammonia criteria, we were involved in how that got developed in the state. We actually did a study with the Wastewater Utility Council, so it's a group that shares costs, and when we looked at what the EPA had done on the ammonia criteria, we found that they had done a pretty good job. So, trying to push back on that criteria and anything that developed from that was going to be very difficult because they did a credible job. There was nothing that we could...
No, I don't disagree, I guess that's not what I'm saying. I'm not pushing back on the statewide construction of what you're describing. I guess what I'm saying is, it sounds to me like what they didn't do is weight it appropriately, if that's the right phrasing, for areas of the state that are demonstrably different from one another. So, in other words, our segment of the South Platte River is completely and absolutely totally different from what goes on in, you know, Rifle, or Glenwood Springs, or Aspen, you know, pick something. And I don't know, I mean, yeah, you could say that the whole average, the average for the entire state is valid, and I'm sure it is, but it would seem like you could overweight and underweight certain areas with the intent of saying, if our standard stays, I don't think we're killing a lot of fish as a result of what we do today. So, whatever was implemented from the 90s has gotten to the point where the incremental amount of aquatic life that's going to be improved by us spending a humongous amount of money to upgrade the quality of the sewer plant discharge seems dramatically out of proportion in terms of the local cost-benefit analysis. Forget about statewide. Does that make sense?
The state does have a classification system, so we have cold water, warm water, Class 1, Class 2, different uses for, that are assigned to water bodies. What typically happens on the uses is every use gets assigned to almost every stream, so there's not much of a category system there. But it's a fairly straightforward and not terribly complex categorization system. You'll be glad to know that EPA is considering including a small muscle in their ammonia criteria, and that'll drive the ammonia criteria down by a factor of, the estimates are five to 10 times.
Outstanding.
It's the uniaudited claim, if you want to...
Yeah, that's great, okay. One last question, if I may.
Before you go to the next question, may I just say one other thing? David Robbins again, for the record. We, over the last 30 years, have, whenever we felt that there was a legitimate challenge to be had, one of the regulatory decisions being made by the state regulators or EPA have participated in that process, have recommended to city councils, past and present, that we should expend monies to engage scientific assistance. These are, after all, very technical processes, it's not just a political process. The Water Quality Control Commission listens to expert testimony and makes decisions based upon it. But the plant has been quite active, and was active in the ammonia criteria, as Dennis said. So, this isn't just sort of coming over us like a wave. We're reacting months and years at a time to new regulatory proposals.
Right.
We don't always win them. We've had success with some, we've had, we've been able to show that some stringent standards were not appropriate for Segment 14 or for the South Platte. We haven't had success with others. We obviously ended up with ammonia criteria that were stricter than we would have hoped, but it was through a process that we participated in.
All right.
That's how this has gone along over the years. We keep saying, okay, this one's going to sting us, we better make sure the science is right, we better hire an outside independent expert to advise us whether there's any way to challenge this, or if there's a better scientific position that could be advanced, and we do when we believe there is.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask was, I think you made the comment about the control mechanisms being the result of some fairly sophisticated equipment that exists at the plant. I guess it begs the question if the, there's always next-generation equipment in terms of, I would assume, if it's like anything else on the technology side, that whatever this, the equipment we've got installed in the plant was installed, pick a date, you know, 5, 10, whatever X number of years ago, that maybe today, something with more sensitivity exists? So, a question is, instead of, again, hypothetically, spending $10 million on a UV system, could we spend a third to a half of that to upgrade the control equipment in the plant to have better control of existing processes and save some money in, you know, in the process, I guess?
Well, what, you know, the Littleton-Inglewood plant is somewhat unique, I would say, I think that's accurate here in the, particularly, you know, in the state, maybe in the country, in implementing state-of-the-art instrumentation.
Okay.
And in fact, you know, as consultants, we often look to the success or not that Littleton-Inglewood has had in, you know, particularly ammonia probes, ammonia detection instrumentation, because, quite frankly, they're sort of up front and in the fore of implementing these things. So, that is the detection of ammonia, and, you know, I don't think, I don't think that they have not implemented, you know, anything that's not in the forefront of the industry right now.
Okay.
In terms of the chlorination control, the oxidation reduction potential control, you know, quite frankly, as far as I know, that is pretty much state-of-the-art. It's a very good system, it's very reliable, except when, you know, this whole relationship between ammonia and chlorine happens, you know. And so, I think, as Kirk said previously, there's an inordinate amount of operator attention required to keep this instrumentation working and reliable, because it means, you know, the consequences are violating permit, but also the consequences are, you know, chemical costs.
From where you guys sit, you know, obviously, you've got intimate knowledge of this plant and of the requirements and so forth and so on, and you've also got extensive knowledge of what goes on in the industry. Is there anything that you're aware of that is out there that would be viable candidate on a cost-benefit analysis? I mean, I saw the ozone piece in here, and it looks like that's 3X, if not more, to, you know, to put in. It doesn't sound like it's cost-effective. What else are people doing in the industry nationally or internationally to try to address some of these issues? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, internationally, you know, if we look to Europe, you know, it's, you know, should I say, another level of treatment because of the highly polluted streams, the highly polluted wastewater that they have, and the turnaround of wastewater to water. And so, what they're looking at is the destruction of these microorganisms, endocrine-disrupting compounds, that, you know, you may have heard about, feminization of fish and all that stuff, and, you know, these concerns about cancer-causing compounds and that sort of thing. So, yes, they are going to things like ozone, you know, despite the cost, to address that sort of contamination. It's still probably the most effective, or even going to advanced oxidation processes, which is combination of ultraviolet disinfection plus hydrogen peroxide, for example, this sort of thing. In terms of straight disinfection, I think, you know, what we've seen is plants migrating away from chlorination, not because it doesn't do a good job, it's done an excellent job, you know, for many, many years, and has probably been the main cause of agent, the main cause of disease eradication around the world. But, you know, ultraviolet disinfection, even in the few years since, actually, I suppose these costs were developed, Kirk, in 2009? Is that right? Yeah. So, even in this short time, with, you know, with the evaluations that we've done, UV disinfection has, in itself, has evolved, has become more reliable, and that's why, you know, it's become, you know, this strong candidate that we believe for Littleton-Inglewood. You know, we tried to list the whole gamut of disinfection agents. Parasitic acid is a strong disinfectant, it's used in the food industry, but as you saw in the memo here, you know, the production is, you know, the amount of chemical that Littleton-Inglewood or, you know, a plant of that size would be using is just, it's just not, you know, just not practicable. It's really chlorine or UV, or if it's not straight disinfection, then there would be other considerations. Maybe ozone would be a better candidate.
You know, but at a way higher cost.
Much higher cost, just for disinfection.
Counsel, we're running out of our time here. We need to make a decision. I guess after listening to this, I'm coming to a different conclusion than I had coming And frankly, as I go back and reread the report, I'm kind of amazed at some of the comparisons that's done. If you go back to the weighting chart that Phil brought up, you see they have transportation costs on here as a weighting factor, but they don't have construction costs as a weighting factor. And if we were starting from scratch, this might be a valid comparison, but we aren't. We have a existing operating chlorination system that there is no factoring at all for the $10 million cost that it takes to scrap that system and go to something else. What I heard was that it's not imperative that we do this. I see that we have a system that's operating, there are other systems, and one of them's listed in here that operates with a chlorination system with apparently low ammonia. And I'm not inclined to spend $10 million to put in a new ultraviolet system because it's now increasing in its effectiveness from what it was before. When we have a chlorination system that works well, and what we're talking about is potential risk factors, when there's actually an alternative to making that work, an alternative that the report writers decided that they weren't going to pursue and analyze the costs for. So, at this point in time, I say we stay with what we have. Deb?
I have a couple of concerns, and one of them is, you know, you mentioned that the Littleton-Inglewood plant is a leader in the industry in state-of-the-art technology, and I suppose that might impress some, but frankly, it concerns me. That sounds like dollar figures. That sounds like we are spending a whole lot of money on, you know, when I hear state-of-the-art, I also hear, you know, innovative technology at its beginning, and other people are watching to see how that works, and meanwhile, it's being improved and reduced in cost, and so then other people will learn from the lessons of those mighty leaders, and we've got carrying this plant on the back of a whole lot of citizens, and I don't know that they're that, that it's that important to them that this plant be a leader in the state-of-the-art technology, and it sounds like this is just one more step in that direction. And I also don't know that we've ever really reached, or ever really talked about where we all stand on the whole idea of the zero tolerance on this. I think we may have different opinions about that, so...
Just other councilmen want to comment, and then I want to, I've got a couple of policy questions, Mayor, for the...
Well, I'm assuming that the compliance schedule, in order to try to meet what we, our deadlines are setting up, we're already several months into this compliance schedule. And when I looked at the comparisons that were given on page 14 of all the disinfection alternatives, and if you compare those disinfection alternatives for the chloramines and the UV, it became obvious to me that UV was the best and the most cost-effective to guarantee that the plant is going to meet the lower ammonia standards. And I think we should, I don't like the cost either, but I think that if we, the fines that we would be suffering for violating our permit, if it happens to, if you continue to go with chlorines, and you happen to violate that discharge permit, the fines are going to eventually get through the $10 million anyway.
Just my quick thought on it right now, which is, I'm not gangbusters for this at the point in time without having some commitment on the ONM savings. As I look at the chart, and it says the ONM costs for the UV going forward are somewhere between $75,000 and $120,000 a year. between $75,000 and $120,000 a year, and if you add the $75,000 savings versus the current system, that means that our O&M on the current system is only running $200,000 or so, and it's hard for me to believe that some of the items that have been outlined as savings as far as staff, transportation, and chemicals are just that amount.
Deb? Jim, you have policy issues?
Well, I just, I just wanted to make sure, I don't know, other comments or where the majority of the council's going to come down on tonight. I do, I'm going to outline some issues for you, and I do think that this 2011 council, I will remind you, this is a partnership with Inglewood. The, the, in the 19 late 70s and 80s, there were a number of violations at the plant. Those city councils at the time did not like newspaper articles identifying violations. There was a commitment over the years that they said, "We do, we do not want violations." They did not like paying fines, and we did pay some fines. They did not like having the adverse publicity of being polluters. So I think this is a discussion, what, what I've heard, you know, this is simplified, is that the ammonia standards are what they are, they're going to be there. The technical professional evaluation is to stay with chlorine, is a riskier protocol for violations. I'm hearing you say, "Well, maybe," this council is saying, "Well, maybe we want it," I'm not all of you, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but if there's four of you, your message is going to be, "We may be, we're not convinced that the benefit is worth the cost. We may be willing to risk some violations if, as long as we're willing to, say, to our, to the press and to the reporters, and when they come and put the microphone in front of you, or to your partners, "Yes, we violated it, but we don't think it did that much damage." So you, I think you have to have Inglewood in with you there, and the districts who pay 66% of it. So is the message then, and I'm, if the message is going to be, "This council prefers another," and I get, Mayor, you said, "Stick with what we have," are you talking about the chlorination?
Yes.
And so, even though, so the message back to the Inglewood council is, "We, we heard the experts, we understand that there's more risk of violations, but we're, we're not, we're not convinced that the cost justifies that risk." And our message to you, Inglewood, is, "We want to consider sticking with the chlor- chlorination." Is that...
If, if that's the, ends up being the decision of the council?
Okay, I'm just...
That's the, that's the obvious...
I want to make sure we're clear about what the council, what the direction of the council is, because I'm going to say to you, I think this is going to take some significant discussion with your partner in this plant, because if there, if there are violations, then the Inglewood City Council has to answer to their constituents, the same as this council has, and explain what decisions they made, why those violations occurred, why they were willing to take the risk of those violations. So just want to be clear about that.
How many violations have we had in the last three years?
Well, you heard about the, the situation with spills, and the state is treating those as violations. Actually, they're not handling them as permit violations, but violations of some regulations. And then we've had, I believe, I'm going to say three. One was ammonia, daily ammonia violation, one was a chlorine violation, that's why we're here tonight, talking about the ultraviolet situation, and one was, I believe we had a fecal coliform violation.
And then three years we've had, so in three years we've had three?
That's my recollection. I may, it may be three or four years, but yes.
And all of them were covered in the press? All of them were covered in the press?
The spills were, we had significant press on those, at least some of those. I don't recall much in the, in the press regarding the three permit, the effluent violations.
Okay, thank you.
First?
Couple of things. Help me under, well, a couple of observations. I guess it would be helpful, it is, whereas operating this thing sort of, at least I am, I'm sort of thinking, I understand what we've been saying more or less here, and I thought the breakfast meeting we had was, was very good from the standpoint of getting up to speed on a lot of these issues, extremely complicated. It's a, for me, it seems like we're in a bit of a bubble. I'm hearing the phraseology, you know, the, the risk goes up, so I don't know what that overtly means, if the risk of incremental incidence goes from 1 in 100 to 1 in 95, is that substantive? Don't know. If it goes from 1 in 100 to 1 in 10, it probably is substantive. So that, that, that's an interesting piece of information. Given the magnitude of the other facilities like ours in the state or the nation, I think somebody made the comment that there's other plants putting in UV, or somebody said something about a $200 million UV system. And, and it's, it's hard to get an apples to apples comparison by virtue of the fact that, that the economy, econo, the economy's a scale for a facility that can afford a $200 million UV installation, could be completely different than, than what we're staring at. What, what I, I'm really struggling with, and Jim, to your point, yeah, 10 years ago, councils may have been in the position where it didn't, it wasn't desirable to have some of the activities going on that clearly have been corrected, but the whole issue of diminishing marginal returns on this thing is, is starting to, to become disconcerting. I mean, if you've, if you've got standards you're meeting that have continued to get more stringent, and we're continuing, we're going to continue to throw more money to get even more, it just, it seems to be an Alice in Wonderland kind of...
I've used the Alice in Wonderland metaphor. I totally agree with you. I just was trying to frame the issue because I think that's a discussion that you're going to have, need to have with the city, the Inglewood City Council.
And I agree with you, I guess that's really...
I, I totally appreciate where you're coming from. We are along light years from the 70s, when there were newspaper articles, we're light years from that. Would we might have them again? I don't know. But you, you, I think you need to have that discussion and be clear then with your partner, Inglewood, if that is this sort of, what I'll call, change in perspective that this council wants to take, and certainly Mr. Robbins can, there may be some legal ramifications of the, the perception of the severity of violation, of whether they were in, you know, whatever, but that, that's something you'd probably want to hear in an executive session.
Well, I think you're spot on. I guess ultimately, what I, what I sort of wanted to ask here was, what exactly then, this is a study session or a special meeting to get information to help us better understand the issue, I mean...
Yes, sir, and if you want more information, I just want to get...
Well, what's our deadline in terms of, I mean, if, if we basically say, "We don't want to go forward," have we killed this, or have we basically said, "We have to have more conversation, or somebody needs to come back with a different proposal, or we never want to see this again?" I mean, what exactly is the process point?
You've heard the comment, "It's not imperative." And I think now, in terms of timing and the permit conditions and compliance and timing, Mr. Robbins, do you want to speak to that, or does Dennis or who?
Well, I can certainly speak preliminarily to it. The permit has a compliance schedule that, that does two things. One, it stays the implementation of the more stringent E. coli standards and the more stringent ammonia standards to give the cities time to determine how they are going to meet them. That compliance schedule, which is written into the permit, has annual requirements for reports. It does not have a mandate in the permit that, that UV be constructed, but it does have requirements that we do certain studies, which we have been doing, make reports, and then make a decision. The reason you do not have the more stringent limits in place today is because the assumption in the permit is you're going to be moving to a new treatment technology or a different technology that will give you a higher probability of meeting these new permit limits. So I...
You're saying they'll mandate it at some point in the future?
Well, no, what they will do is mandate that you meet the permit limits, and then deal with their enforcement authority if you don't.
Right. But David, to try to be more specific, I think, and maybe this is from the engineers, the, to make a technology decision to do something, and I'm a little bit, I'm not real clear, I'm not tracking with the mayor if, if sticking with chlorine is doing something, or if there has to be some additional engineering, but let's just say, if we were going to do something, pick a technology, what is, what is the timeline to make that technology decision? Is, can, can somebody answer that question?
Yeah, you know, as far as, the first page of that report has the schedule lined out, and so where we were going with this is, here's our schedule, we have a, we had made that decision that UV is the viable alternative, eliminating those, those chlorine issues, and that come, I think it's April or May, we need, we need to be designing a new system to ensure that you can comply with the new limits.
So this is February?
This is February.
And if, if this council made a decision that said, "We, we will not endorse, nor will we help fund UV as a technology, that's our position on this." When would then presumably a, some sort of decision in concert with Inglewood need to be made on technology? Would it need to be made by, by April?
Yes, whatever technology, if you're going to, you know, if, if you're going to, you know, if, if there's going to be another selection of technology, which, you know, whatever that might be, you know, the non-imperative thing is, basically, if you don't do it, we're not, we just can't guarantee that, guess what, when those new permit limits come in, you're not, you're not going to violate. We've seen it once already, that's the issue. And so when you talk about the deadline, May, is there a new technology out there? It's, right now, the chosen technology is UV, we need to move in that direction.
All right. So if the, if the Littleton City Council says, "We, we, we're not buying, you haven't sold us, we don't, we don't think the cost, the five, our 5 million share, Inglewood City Council, we're, we're not in, we don't buy it, we don't think it's worth it, we don't see the cost benefit, we're not ponying up the 5 million." I'm just picking it up, and they say, "We, we think chlorine's working fine." And, yeah, there might be some risk, but, you know, we don't, we're not hung up on zero tolerance, and there might be some risk, and we don't think it'll hurt the fish that much anyway. That's just our position with, with, in terms of our position to the, I mean, the, the state is not going to say, "You said you would do UV." The state is going to say, "You said by 2014, you collectively, by city, you will comply with the new ammonia regs," right? So if, I'm just framing this, if we said, "Yeah, and we're taking our chance, we're going to stick with chlorine, and when 2014 gets here, we're willing, we, we don't think we're going to violate that much, we're, we're, we told you in the permit, we're going to comply with the new EPA standards, the ammonia standards, but we don't think UV is that great and it's going to make us any better, so we're sticking with chlorine, and when we get to 2014, we think we'll be good to go." That's, they could do that.
Yes, but I know there's some reporting that has to go along with it, Dennis. You have a, a May report, I believe, along with that compliance schedule is, you have to give a report on where you're at with the design process, and so...
And what if, what if you reported, what if we reported back and say, "We've reviewed it, we've looked at all the data, we've looked at the engineering, we're sticking with chlorine, that's our progress report." What would happen?
My guess would be, we would, well, we have the reporting requirements that requires us to take certain actions and report on them. If the decision is to stay with the chlorine, we would report to the state that the decision was made that we're staying with the chlorine system, and we will be in compliance with all of our permit limitations. The state would have the option of letting the permit stand as it is, so every year, we would write a report that says, "We're not doing anything and will comply in 2014." Or the state could say, "Then your compliance schedule is over." They could amend the permit and change the date so that the chlor, the new ammonia standards and the E. coli standards are effective as of a date sooner than 2014. That would be, that would be their choice.
Yeah, so then, then they would, we would start then measuring and measuring, and maybe it'd be 2012 or 2013, they would say, "Okay, we're not, we thought you were going to implement UV, but you're not now, you've told us you're sticking with chlorine, so we're not going to delay the new standards till 2014, we're going to move them up, and you're going to start reporting any violations as of some date, you know, I'm making it up, January 1st, 2012."
Correct.
Okay. So is, is there, am I missing something here, Counselor? Okay?
No, Jim, the, the compliance schedule is in place so that you have the time to go through the study, determine what technology you're going to use, design it and construct it, so you're ready when the new numbers come in.
Right.
If you elected before that, that you're not going to do the latter half of that process, then I think Dennis correctly states the options that the state would have. There's no particular reason for them to continue a compliance schedule when in fact nothing more is going to be done, so...
So then you'd be under the new...
That's, that's the dice roll. The only problem with all of this stuff is, it's like building highways. You have to, you, you can't just say, "Oh my God, 20,000 people moved in, we've got to build a highway." You know, you've got to go through this multi-year process. If you have a current process to move toward an alternative disinfection technology and say, "We're not going to do that, we're going to wait and see how we do with the permit," you're, we're going to be in the position of then having to figure out how to convince someone to give us time if it turns out we can't meet the permit limits well, so that we can go through the process that we are, would currently be giving up.
And what about this zero tolerance issue about, okay, what if we violated it once a year? I mean, I'm just sort of making this up, but like, so what?
Well, it would depend on what you violated the permit for. I suspect if you violated the permit for conditions that you, that the division had told you you were going to need to go through a compliance schedule to deal with, and you elected not to, they would probably take, my guess, and I'm purely guessing here, but they'd probably take a relatively serious and negative view of that.
Like some sort of enforcement action?
Historically, we had, the statutes provide a number of matters in mitigation that when we have had a permit violation, we have been able to point to very often to reduce and mitigate the amount of impact of any penalty activity. In fact, sometimes we've actually been able to do things that were good for the communities that the plant serves, and at the same time meet...
And I have in my vague, in my, in the back of my mind, some circumstance where we put up some money to do something else beneficial, but...
That's correct.
Okay.
And we built, we've actually built quite a bit of bike path back years ago, when the plant was not as well tuned as it is today.
Okay.
But the, the main, the only, the only risk really, I think, that, that you, you have to factor in is the, is the knowledge that if the gamble doesn't pay off, this is the one that makes me nervous, if it doesn't pay off and the, and the facility isn't able to meet numbers the way we need it to, there's such a lead time to fix that, during which time you continue not to meet the numbers.
Okay.
If the gamble pays off, and this... If the gamble pays off and this plant can meet the numbers using the current chlorine technology, it was, it was, it was a great gamble.
Okay. I'm just trying to give you your options, counsel.
And Jim, from my perspective, I'm not sure I would state it that way. Uh, you know, we're talking about, uh, I believe 250,000 folks in the service area. Uh, if we did the $10 million addition, it's 40 bucks a head. I haven't heard how we're gonna recover that and I currently don't believe the cost savings. So my answer today is I can't make a decision 'cause I don't think we've had complete staff work on how do we recover it-
Okay.
-and believable cost savings.
So you want more information on cost recovery and cost savings?
Right, I'd say incomplete staff work at this level.
Um, but it, does, does that need some more specificity? Excuse me, mayor. Does, does staff understand that in terms of the cost savings? Do we think we can respond to Councilman Sernanik? Is there any more we can, do you think we can provide more specificity?
Yeah, I, I can give you the report.
Okay.
So, I'll be happy to, yeah.
All right.
And as well is, where do we get the cost from? Do we pass it on to folks at 40 bucks a head? And what's the tolerance that folks have for that kind of an increase?
All right.
Jim, I, I, I think there's one other thing. I don't, I, I think it's important that we not leave it behind. And that is, there was a question raised by the councilman about whether there were in fact, cost savings and by the mayor or if in fact, the report suggested that they were the same cost. And I think we should explain that. I, I don't wanna let that one just slide by because I thought that there were some-
There was a discrepancy, correct. And well, and I will point-
It needs to be explained to them.
Yes.
Because we, I don't wanna leave that on the record. I don't think that's fair to the council people.
Understand.
Okay.
Good point.
Bruce and then Debbie.
Um-
Sorry, and then Peggy.
Bruce?
Hang on.
Go ahead.
Peggy first, she's right.
Yeah, go ahead.
I forgot her.
So I have just a few real, small questions. First, when do you expect to get the, the results of the material that you sent to be tested?
All those non-legal questions.
I don't have an answer for you. Uh, we sent the samples out several weeks ago and I really haven't checked as to when we expect to get results back.
Okay. Um, and what effect, when we have runoff and it has animal fecal matter, what effect does that have, if any, on all this? Like if you had a, a massive input?
Uh, the, the effect that it's had now is that segment 14 in particular, uh, does not meet the water quality standards the state has set for the segment. Uh, so the result is, we have to discharge at the stream standard or below. And that's our current permit.
Yeah, no, but that wasn't what I asked. I asked, when you have runoff, a big runoff, that has a lot of fecal matter, does that, is that influence these results? I mean, the, the outcome?
Oh, I mean, of, of the, of the samples that we sent to, to the lab?
No, 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 I'm just, forget that part. Might that cause a violation?
No.
Okay, 'cause it doesn't-
Our violation is at the pipe.
Okay, it's not coming through that.
The natural fecal matter from geese and, and skunks and dogs and cats and everything else are coming in on storm flow events through, not through our district.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. The only reason I ask that, in August 2007, we had one massive, um, rain that, sure backed, backed up water in Stern Park in places. And I think we had another, another significant rain that August too. So I just wanted to clear my head on that, okay? So I didn't get quite finished.
As I know your city staff has, has talked to you over time, EPA is also looking at stormwater regulations and-
Right.
-treatment standards, and that would address the issue you're raising.
Yeah.
And that is another potentially large cost item, separate and apart from the operation.
Yeah, okay. Then, um, what if we moved through the process, through, up to design and whatever, and then just put it on hold until we had the answers, hopefully, from these tests and a couple of other questions?
Who's gonna pay for it, Peggy?
Pardon? Well, it'd be cheaper to get to that point than to actually go through and build the whole thing, I mean, to, to, to implement. So I'm, I'm just asking that, you know? It's like not putting the, the shovel to the, to the ground if you get to a certain point.
Right, and, and the further you go along with the process, like the pre-design portion, um, we'll be able to define and come up with a more accurate cost estimate. Is it really 10 million, is it 8 million, what is that number? And so the further you get along, you can refine that. We can also, as you said, look at these results of the inhibition. Um, as John said, that's really one of the issues, but it's not the whole issue. It's, it's really that, the complexity of trying to control, um, the system with the current processes out there just makes it unstable. But the further you do go, the further, uh, you know, what, you'll have better numbers. For example, at the end of the pre-design, we'll have a pretty good, you know, um, cost estimate, better than the, you know, the 10% planning level or the $10 million planning level estimate. So, and then you can always, at the end, you can always, you know, say, "Do we wanna spend the, whatever that 7, 6, 7, 5, 6, 7, 8 million dollar project is?"
Okay, and then one final one. Have you looked at using combinations, several combinations of things as opposed to one, might you get some payback? And I think after the, the December meeting, you know, right there, that, you know, I was saying, you know, what if you combine, um, partial UV with things like aeration and wetlands and a whole bunch of other things? I mean, I had a whole list that I thought potentially could get combined, that some of which would be rather natural with the wetlands and all of that.
Um, I will say that in the pre-design, we will be looking at the most optimum way we can do that, to minimize how much equipment we're going to be putting in, to maximize how much of the existing facility we can use to save money. I will state that, yes, we will indeed look at it that way. As far as the other alternatives, as far as wetlands goes, um, typically, no, we just don't have the real estate or the space, you know, where other, uh, facilities across the country do. But we will be looking at, how do we optimize this, uh, process, minimize the cost, put in what, you know, just, just the minimum that we need to comply with it and, uh, whatever's the, you know, trying to pull with that.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, if we can't do wetlands, although I had an idea about how to do it, but if we can't do something like that, again, I had about five or six in my head that might get combined. If you, if you had solar panels, for example, that the water would run through and get pretty superheated, but then you have to cool it before you can put it in the water, right?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so then maybe some aeration thing that allows the heat to, um, apart from generating a tornado or something. Um, but, you know, some, some out of the box ways of thinking of combining.
Yeah, and typically, um, you know, we call them sustainable solutions. We're always, you know, in fact, the industry is looking at those solutions right now. What really comes down to is a cost benefit. Some of those things are so costly for the benefit. You s- you know, you try to be as green as you can, but under that cost benefit, you know, analysis. So, uh, I will say that typically, we've looked at a number of o- options at the plant or so, other companies have too. Actually, this plant has gone through with a number, another company, uh, was mandated by the state to look at, how do we optimize savings and what are some sustainable solutions? And, um, for the most part, one or two of them kinda pan out, you know, as far as paybacks, but for the most part, it's just really expensive to do those sort of things.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce and then Deb.
I'm gonna, uh, actually Peggy raised a point that I'd written down and I, I actually agree with her. I, I think the, um, I'm inclined to gamble that we proceed with, to continue what we're doing, but I'd probably also be inclined to hedge the bet a little bit and continue to do some of this engineering, pre-engineering, pre-construction work because I'm gonna assume that the vast majority of the project cost is in the construction and startup phases of this thing as opposed to the engineering side. So it may, and, and I guess what I'm ultimately thinking here is that if, if what I'm hearing is that the standards continue to get tougher and it does get more challenging to control, I think, given the capabilities of the plant, we've got a, a halfway decent shot at continuing to be able to effectively control. But if ultimately, we have to do the UV, it's probably not out of the realm of reason that we may end up there someday. So if there's a way to at least be ready to pull the trigger if it gets to that point, if it doesn't, we've got the engineering invested and we've got a plan on the shelf that, that more or less would work. But that would more, I think, to my way of thinking, probably be the safest play on the whole thing, just because we're gonna save a chunk of money if we can get away without spending the construction costs. But if we're, they, they stuck a gun to our heads and we basically end up with a lot of penalties because we just physically can't do it with the control process in place, I guess I'd rather, prefer to be in a position where we could, you know, make that happen sooner. I, the other question I wanted to ask, that's my two cents worth. The other question I wanted to ask is, has there been, it's our responsibility and it's Inglewood Council's responsibility, but as participants, has there been any communication with the districts from the standpoint of, of their input to any of this? Has anybody talked to them? Pat Fitzgerald or anybody, out of curiosity?
I saw Pat here.
There he is.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'd spent a long time.
Speaking of the devil.
I apologize.
No, we haven't talked to our board, we haven't done any of the studies or decisions. I, I got a copy of the report today, if you'd like.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did you get the big one of this week?
Yep.
I guess I kinda land on, um, a little bit where Bruce says in that I, I just, at this point, the information that I have would not lead me to think that the UV is the end all be all. I need more information, I need the, the, what Phil brought up about the cost benefit on that. And, you know, I just think that there's a point at which you keep, you know, we just keep hearing that we have to do this and we have to do that, and everything has these million dollar price tags to it. And at some point, I just get real concerned that, you know, the information we're getting, I don't always trust it. So it's very difficult to make a $10 million decision when I'm not confident in what the information that's coming giving me the basis for that decision. Um, I also think that we need to probably arrange a meeting with Inglewood. I don't know that, if they've had a meeting on this and what their decision is, um, if there are thumbs up and a go-ahead waiting to hear what we have to say. But clearly, I don't know that there's support here tonight to move ahead with it. And it would seem to me that since it is a shared facility, it would be good to get us all in the same room, hearing the same information and having a discussion about it. I think it's an interesting op- um, option to look at ramping up in the, kind of as a protective measure. Um, but I would like to see some numbers on that, some times on that, some practical realities to that, 'cause there may be some loopholes and some problems there. But I think that would be a place where more information would be important. So that's where I land, is right square in the middle.
All right. Um, I'm gonna make a motion here in a second, but I guess I would disagree with the characterization that Jim has of the council decision. What I see is a group that's come to us with no quantification of the risk at all, with an anecdotal, "If you don't give us this money, we can't guarantee that we won't be out of compliance sometimes," when in fact, they're already out of compliance sometimes. They have other facilities that have successfully used chlorination and it says in here that it's technically feasible, but they decide for some reason not to explore that alternative.
You're talking about the Phoenix plant?
Yeah.
Mayor?
And, um, and even though, uh, even though that's technically possible, so we have no idea what the cost alternative of that is. And frankly, from my viewpoint, I would be failing to do my job of being fiscally responsible to the ratepayers and the citizens of Littleton. If I were to approve a $5 million expenditure to go off and do something when I don't know what the risks are, I don't know what all the alternatives are, I don't know what the costs of the alternatives, and we can't even figure out for sure whether there's, what the O and M costs are compared to the, to the regular thing. And, and frankly, I'm surprised that the supervisory committee got this far. You're either hearing some information that we're not hearing or I'm having a hundred, hard, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're making decisions here. And I realize that Inglewood employees are the ones that operate the plant, but I, I'm hoping that Inglewood Council is using a little more thought process than, than what it appears to is happening here. I, I can't understand how we can get to the point where we're down the path to spend $10 million on something when we don't know what the risks are of not spending it, we don't know what the costs are of alternatives that we know are working. We already don't have a guarantee that we're not gonna violate the permit 'cause we're already violating the permits. I mean, I don't know how we got to the point of making a decision to get this far. And, and you guys are engineers. So I guess we've got a couple alternatives. I've heard Bruce and Deb say that, um, you're uncomfortable with the risk of the timeframe of not doing anything on the ultraviolet. So let's, you wanna, you wanna meet with Inglewood first? Do you wanna say that we're willing to spend up to a certain amount of money with continuing the engineer on this? Do you wanna hire another engineering company to come in and evaluate this whole process? Frankly, I think we need to do that at this point in time.
Maybe it's come back with, with, uh, does it come back with, with a costing of what the... Well, I, I think you raised a, a number of points, you know, in terms of additional information and, and follow-on information. I, I think we need to meet with Inglewood. But at a minimum, to Deb's point, what's the cost progression of this compliance schedule? You know, what, how much money's associated with step? I get, where are we? I guess we're sitting here-
Let me just ask for a couple of points of clarification, uh, mayor. Quantification of risk, do, do you mean by that, the number of times potentially? Well, first off, I hear you're saying, hey, uh, 90, Phoenix 91st Street is, went with a bypass for ammonia control and they're still using chlorination.
Yes.
So if they're doing that, how come we can't do that here?
And, and what would it cost?
And what would it cost? Am I-
Yes.
I'm just trying to pin down our homework assignment here.
Yes.
All right, so how come that? Then secondly, then, um, I, and I'm just thumbing through here. Uh, we're, we, we talked about ozone and I think John talked about ozone being more expensive. Do you want- Did we do a cost estimate on all the four alternatives?
Just the top two, ozone and-
Just the top two. Do you wanna cost estimate on all the, not only the bypass, the chlorination that they use in Phoenix, but the other four?
They got ozone in here at 33 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, if that's anywhere close to right, it's so far out of-
Okay, so ozone's kind of off the table. So the Phoenix plant, why can't we use that and what would it cost?
Yes.
Right? You guys getting this? All right, and then, do you want to, the pericetic acid? And I don't, nobody talked about that, so I don't know if that's an alternative you wanted to look at.
You know, again, it's, it-
Did we do a cost, we didn't do a cost estimate on that?
We didn't because it wasn't really, UV and ozone outweighed all of the other alternatives that, you know, we said it's not worth doing a cost estimate 'cause it's not gonna, the, the advantages aren't gonna pan out.
So you got the, you got the $10 million cost on the ozone, I mean, on the UV. You wanna know why the, what I'll call the MTF- You want to know why the, what I'll call the MTF bypass, basically staying with chlorination and bypassing it, why that's not feasible here and, and if, what the cost would be if we considered it?
Yeah.
Right? And...
I think the other thing you need to know, you need to cost out the steps on this chart.
Yeah.
What, what page is that on?
Two.
Two.
Okay.
We're, we're sort of sitting here, it looks to me as if we're sitting here...
Yeah, well, that, that's the other thing is, and I'm, because I'm looking here, final design was due, but first I'm hearing that there needs to be homework on the alternatives.
Right.
And then, Mr., then I, that's one thing, and then if, if, because the cost savings and the cost recovery that Mr. Sernanik asked about are pegged to the UV alternative.
Or either or.
So what I'm hearing is, task one is a feasibility analysis of sticking with chlorination. And I, yeah. Am I right on this, Mayor?
Yeah, in fact, I'm going to make that in a motion, because at this point, I want a different company looking at the alternatives for chlorination. So
Okay.
I move that we engage a different engineering company to go off and do an assessment of the chlorination alternatives.
Second.
Okay. That Jose, the second?
How quickly is that? We got to put an RFP out?
Charlie, Charlie Bloston, Director of Public Services. Charlie, you want to respond to that in terms of timing and cost?
Yeah, let me also address one question the mayor raised. The supervisory committee has not authorized engineering design for the UV project. You said, how did the supervisory committee get to the point? We have not.
Okay.
The only thing that's been authorized so far is a pre-design, but there's been no authorization for the engineering. If you want to engage the services of a second engineer to review this, assuming that we could just contact engineering firms and get quick proposals, probably by the first of March, the time period on that might be 90 to 120 day max.
For the study, you mean?
Yeah. And the cost, we are ballparking it at 30 to $50,000.
So I guess...
Is that our nickel?
Yeah. Unless, unless Inglewood decides that they're interested enough in the, in the cost. And I think we probably, I mean, there's a couple of other things I think we need to do simultaneously. We obviously need to talk to the Inglewood City Council. We need to get, as you said, we need to get a cost of what this is to continue, because otherwise, we're flying blind on that. And we need to get some kind of risk analysis, and I guess, I don't know if that's with the other engineering company, or Brown and Colwell wants to come up with a risk analysis, or maybe we get them both to do that so we can figure what it is.
And is, sir, is the risk analysis the number of potential violations?
Yes, yes.
Can we get additional information on other, what other cities are doing? I mean, if this is coming down, other treatment plants have to be looking at the same situation, not just Phoenix.
Yeah.
But we can't be the only ones dealing with it. What are others doing?
I think that's probably what our, our engineering company would have to look at.
Okay.
I mean, Phoenix is the one example that we know from here that's done this, but perhaps there's a bunch of others.
Be part of the task.
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's imperative that we get together with Inglewood, because it seems like we're always off on two different paths. I, in my course of council, you know, we, we don't seem to be getting together like maybe we should. Whenever something happens within that plant, we, we go down and we have a breakfast and we hear their attorney give us a, a study or tell us about all of the things that are good things that are happening, but we also have a lot of things that I think councils just have to sit down and chat with each other and say, you know, what are you guys doing? What's your thinking, et cetera, just like we're doing right now. And I think it's very, we've got to get together with those people a little more often.
Would you like for us to try to schedule something specifically on this chlorination issue?
Yeah, I think we're probably going to need to, council?
Well, let's see, but that's the intent, part of the intent of your motion and Jose's comments.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Motion is that we engage a different engineering company to go off and do an analysis of the chlorination alternative. All in favor, raise your hands. That's six to one. I'm assuming, Jim, you're voting against it?
I will vote against it absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we need to schedule something.
We'll, we'll move forward with that. We'll, Charlie, we'll start with the scope of work for the alternatives analysis. We'll coordinate with, I'll call, or talk to Gary, or we'll talk tomorrow about setting, you know, trying to schedule a meeting. So we've got our marching orders.
Okay.
Okay. Thank, Inglewood folks, thank you for being here, and John and Kirk, thank you for being here on a very, very, very cold night. Appreciate you guys. Very, very informative, and I thought you were very candid and straightforward with the council. So thank you for your candor. Want a break?
You okay with a break?
Well, what I was going to suggest is, I probably have as much discussion on this next item as we've had about the sewer item. I'd like to see this next item get pushed to another time.
The lighting ordinance?
Yes, because it's going to be another hour, hour and a half discussion.
Well, I, I think we need to take something off. Would you rather take the lighting ordinance off of the contractual services?
Lighting ordinance.
Well, is Kelly here?
Yes, sir.
Kelly, come on up.
What's the schedule on contractual? Because I, I have a lot of discussion too, but my problem is, is we, we have car dealers that brought this up as an issue a couple of years ago, and we've been...
Well, on this...
Meeting with them on the 17th?
Pardon?
Auto dealers and large employers are breakfast on the 17th.
Of this month?
Yes.
Oh, within...
Next Thursday. But then, on the, on the lighting?
Yeah.
Jan has some additional stuff that's being recommended with a different draft. So I suggest maybe, plus some of us have talked to her otherwise with some things. I suggest if we delay that, that she could put together something that we then have time to look at before we start discussing.
Okay, today's the eighth, right? So...
Yes, sir.
Seventeenth is a week from this Thursday. What's the timeframe on the contractual?
Well, my intent was, it's on the agenda for next Tuesday night, but we can pull But some of them know that you're going to consider it tonight and then next Tuesday night for formal approval, but they can wait.
Kelly is not absolutely drop dead date.
No, they can wait. It's not a big deal.
And it's just a matter, some of them obviously would like to have the money if you, when you approve it. I don't know how quickly Kelly processes the checks, but that's just the delay of...
We have to mail them an agreement and they have to sign it and send it back, so it takes a little bit to get it processed, but it's not a big deal if you want to pull it.
How long do you think it'll take, Jim Taylor?
I would think it's going to be an hour or longer.
So you want to do the contractual services next?
I think it'll be shorter.
All right. Is there any objection to postponing status on lighting ordinance? What's our schedule?
I'm, I'm getting hand signals, hang on a second. Ms. Dickinson, our principal planner, please come to the table, and I, she was wildly making hand signals. At first I thought they were obscene, but then she was trying to get my attention.
I was past my bedtime, so I was...
Oh, you've moved into cranky hour. All right. This is Jan Dickinson.
Hi. The, I, the changed draft that Peggy was referring to is, I had, I sent the draft that you all have out to our city design consultant, because we needed some fresh eyes on this thing. I've been looking at it for too many months, and he, unfortunately, we did that, because he got back to me with some suggested changes yesterday that made a lot of sense, and one area especially needed correcting, thanks to him. And so I brought copies of that revised draft with his changes highlighted in yellow and everything. Did you, would you want me to go ahead and pass those out to you tonight? Do you have those ahead of time?
Why don't you pass them out tonight? What's our schedule look like on the 15th?
You have, it's, you have a public hearing on the water contract?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Uh huh. And I'm trying to think of
Budget.
The, the report, the first, the year-end report on the finances.
Okay.
Suzanne, those are the two major items, Mayor. I don't, anything else I think is going to be a relatively routine item.
What if we, what if we were to move the lighting ordinance to next Tuesday, the 15th? That way we'll have something to say to the auto dealers and the large employers on the 17th.
Well, what if, what if we just talked about that one little thing tonight to see if we have some agreement and can say to them, this is the direction we anticipate moving?
Can I intercept one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that is one part of the code staff decided not to change, was the way, I didn't, I'm not aware of if they're, if the auto dealers are complaining about the current lighting code that they, that we have now for them, or if they're complaining about some things we had, we were talking about proposing, but they had some issues with some of the proposed things initially that our other, our lighting consultant had proposed with dimming the lights and doing some of the things that, you know, we heard at their little meeting we had with them. After relooking at what the, our consultant, lighting consultant had proposed, which was very complicated, and, and I knew that I was never going to be able to understand it to enforce it, we just made a staff decision to leave that part of the code the same, because we, it didn't seem like it was broken. I mean, we hadn't heard complaints from the dealerships on, on how it exists now, and, then the only complaints we'd received from neighbors about the dealerships have been in relating to a dealership that wasn't compliant with the, the current code. The rest of them that are compliant with the current code, we've never heard any complaints about on their lighting. So I didn't, you know, I just, just want to interject that right now, we're not proposing any change to what they already have, so.
Well, just be prepared that we may have a very long meeting next week, and if we're going to do a study session after that to talk about the lighting ordinance, we're going to be later than we are tonight by the time we even get ready to start it. And I'm not seeing, sensing that there is a crisis to do the lighting ordinance in light of what Jan just said.
Well, I was wondering if at the breakfast, would it be possible to touch base with the lighting, the dealerships?
I've got one dealership that's been complaining for, since we had breakfast with them two years ago, that the lighting is too dim for him to sell his vehicle.
The current code is too dim?
The current code, which he has installed and put in compliance.
Okay.
And that's the only dealer I've heard from. I don't know if everybody else is happy, which of the dealers are in compliance and which one aren't in compliance, but...
I would say most of them are in compliance, with the exception of maybe a couple.
I'm, I'm just a little embarrassed that it's been
Right.
two years since we talked about it, and we're now going to have another breakfast with them and...
And so what's, we've had it for two years. What's the delay in two months? Look at the study session that we've already got set up for, for March 8th, a month from now, and it's pretty full, and it's going to be a very intense study session at that time as well, with some major decisions to be made. And I'd rather see us go with the lighting ordinance when we've got some time to sit down and talk about it and hash it out like we've done tonight with the sewer plant. And I'd like to see us move into the study session in April to talk about the lighting ordinance. And we can tell, we can tell the dealers, that's what we're going to do. We're going to talk about it at that time. It gives us a plan to do something.
But we can also get more input from the rest of them. If you've only heard from one, if you have, then maybe we just point blank raise that question to get more, more input.
Well, I have some pretty substantial changes I want to suggest too, and I suspect it will take, it'll take us a while to do that, so.
Do we have a study session? We don't have a study session on the 22nd, do we?
That's our board and commission.
Right. Oh, it is? Is that, okay, 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 okay. I would have, forgot about the date.
22nd, 23rd, 24th.
You're right. You're right.
On your calendar?
All right. How about this as a compromise? What if we put it on the agenda for next Tuesday night? If the meeting goes too long, we can postpone it for another time. That way, if a miracle happens and we get through, then we get through.
I think, I think there's, there's a lot to be discussed. So I think it's, it's, it's a special meeting, study session issue first. That's my feeling.
Let me move this, but...
Twenty second.
Why don't you move the postpone that to whatever date?
I'd like to move to postpone the lighting ordinance discussion until Tuesday, April, find an April calendar here. April the 12th.
Second.
April the 12th.
Are we...
And Phil, you seconded it, right?
Are we not going to have a meeting March 22nd?
That's interviews for boards and commissions.
No, that's February.
Oh, March.
February. March 22nd. It's, there are five Tuesdays in March.
At your, um, at your council... Yeah, workshop on the 18th of February, I'll present you with a proposed outreach schedule for the year. So you don't have any third Tuesday, fourth Tuesday, not third...
Fourth.
Fourth Tuesday things scheduled after board and commission interviews next week.
We don't?
No, because you need to adopt an outreach schedule for the year.
So we could, we could have a study session on the 22nd.
We're talking, we're talking March, is that what you're talking?
Right.
Yeah. If you recall last year, when you had your workshop, you did your outreach schedule for the year, and we asked you to go ahead and do January and February too, cover those months, so we didn't waste any open nights. And so that's what we'll be doing again, is taking you from March into February of next year.
Tell you what, let's do the, we've got the motion for the April 12th. We're going to have the workshop when?
The 18th.
The 18th. That when we go through the outreach schedule, we can decide to move this to the, to March during the workshop.
The only, the only thing about that is, it's not going to help you when you meet with the car dealers before we do the workshop.
No, I do.
Because you can't tell them.
We're so far in the hole on that, so...
That's why I think you just set a date certain and not play around with if this happens, or if this happens, or if this happens.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? Motion is to postpone the lighting ordinance until April 12th. All in favor, raise your hands. All right, now.
Thank you, Dennis and Jan for coming tonight, but do you want to pass out the sample ordinance?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and pass it out to us since you're here, and then let's take a five-minute break, and then we can come back and do contractual services.
Jim and Doug, since you're both thinking about, and if it's out there far enough, if you have some thoughts, is there any way to either, you know, meet with Jan and get heard on, put some notes together or anything like that, or you just only want to introduce them as part of discussion?
I'm, I'm fine with that. What I've got is pretty radical, though.
But, you know...
Chop out the vast majority of the lighting ordinance.
We just want to hand out flashlights, don't you?
And, and I, I think part of the discussion is that we need to have a discussion about it. And, and I, I think part of the discussion is that we need to have a discussion about it.
2011 contractual service. Jim, want to do a quick overview?
Good evening, Council. I really don't have any presentation to make. Just to summarize, I gave you a cover memo. There is fifty-eight thousand budgeted again this year, fifty-nine thousand, I'm sorry. And the total amount requested was seventy-two thousand nine hundred. I did a spreadsheet for you to show the disbursements that you've made since two thousand two. And then copies of the cover letters. A lot of these organizations provide us with a lot more information than what's here. So I try to go through it and just take the important stuff out. We get a lot of annual reports and brochures, but these are basically the funding requests that you have. So Councilmember Cole called me yesterday with some follow-up questions for some of these organizations. And I was able to get ahold of some of them and get some of those questions answered, but not all of them. But I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Question first. Well. I would love to quadruple the amount of money in here for everyone. But my, the, the question I guess I want to ask is just philosophical. Does it make sense for us to provide small amounts of dollars to twenty, or how many ever charities we've got on here versus, say substantive dollars to four or five where you could have a bigger impact? And I honestly don't know the answer to the question and I'm just asking. What do you think? I mean, I, I really don't want to, you know, that, you know, I don't want to not fund a Rappahoe Santa Claus shop. But on the other hand, does it make more sense for the sake of an argument to, to give thirty thousand dollars to interfaith or, or doctors care as opposed to a small amount to, to, you know, a bunch of different charities?
Well, I think you raise a good point and philosophically, you guys will have to figure that out. But in some cases, for example, the Metro Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards, that's almost like a, um, that's the cost of being a participant in Metro Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards. They have a set amount that they ask counties to contribute to that and a set amount that they ask cities. So I think that's a five hundred dollars that they ask for. So in the scheme of things, it's not a large sum of money. But again, that's what they expect of cities who want to participate in the program to contribute. In the case of Bega, it's a relatively small amount of money. Typically in the years when the delegation from Australia comes to Littleton, they ask for a little more because they usually do a, a community dinner, which you're all invited to dine with the delegation. So, um, I see what you mean, but.
There's reasons for.
There's reasons, some of them are small. You know, th- these conversations do happen every few years. Philosophically too, some of these are more cultural performing arts type of not-for-profit 501(c)(3)'s, but others are human services and they're all receiving funding out of the same pot. But that's something you'll need to decide.
Thanks.
Sure.
Speed this along. Jim?
Well, I'll speed it along.
Okay.
I would move that we fund at two thousand eleven level at the same level that we did in two thousand ten.
Second.
For a total fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so we moved and seconded to fund the two thousand eleven at two thousand ten. Discussion. Peggy.
Yes, I, I did call Kelly yesterday with quite a few questions on several of these. Last year we said we wanted some very specific information going forward in terms of numbers of Littleton residents being served and where, where people get their additional in, revenues from and some other information. And we did not. and some other information. And we did not, and Kelly sent out letters saying that, and we did not get that kind of information from all of these. So this year, I'd be willing to support this motion, but I would not be willing in the future to do that if we don't get that kind of information. Because some of these, we don't know really how many, if any, Littleton residents are being served.
Well, you know what? We have, these are actually, sorry to correct Bruce, but these are actually contractual services that we have with each one of them. And we sign a contract with each one of these. What if we put that provision in the contract? That they report to us the number.
Okay.
Kelly, question. I know you asked for it in your letter. In the documentation we have, for some of these, we didn't receive that, but you also mentioned there's additional documentation that they may have provided. In some of these, and I don't know, Peggy may have a specific example, where it's not included in their letter, was it included in the rest of their information? No?
No, I pulled out all the stuff that we specifically asked for. Several years ago, councils had told us they wanted this in there, and so that's what I put in the cover letter that they received.
In some of these instances, they're going to, the best that they're going to be able to do is estimate.
Yeah.
Phil Harmonic, Littleton Symphony, Littleton Corral, they're going to have a crowd of people standing out in front of them, you know, the best.
Right. But there are, there are some things that are said in here that suggest that at least some of these can provide much more information of the type that we requested.
Want to make a motion for that, to that effect?
Okay, so I'm...
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Oh, yes. You're right. I'm sorry. You're right. Let's get that out of the way. Bruce?
I did, I should have probably gone through Reddit. The South Suburban Park and Rec Buck Blitz is what?
Their Friday night with teens at the Buck Center?
They do one Friday night per month where they close the center.
Okay, so that's what that is.
And it's aimed specifically at middle school kids.
Okay, and our funding of that, not that, again, it's not a good activity, but given South Suburban's financial resources, what is our $1,000 accomplishing?
Goodwill.
Scholarships for attendees as opposed to...
Scholarships for attendees.
That's basically what it is. At the Lone Tree Center, they do something similar. I haven't looked at the budget, but I don't know whether Centennial does it at the Goodson. And then it's kind of a social service item in Sheridan.
How many, do they get a lot of people showing up for this?
They get a pretty good attendance.
Okay.
But on this one, their cover letter says they want, they want to have some new interactive games and equipment, such as Xbox Connect and several compatible games encouraging physical activity, and new lighting for the dance room. So, I mean, that's part of their target with that money.
Well, I just, I mean, I guess my only, my, the thrust of the thing is not that, again, not that I think any of this stuff is bad, but relatively speaking, South Suburban's got resources. If they want to do that, it seems like that's something that they could make happen in short order.
It's, Jim's closer to being correct. It's really, you know, this amount they're asking for isn't for all of those things. That's their general activity and what they're trying to do. This really supports scholarships or, you know, folks that can't afford it. They can apply.
Okay.
And can I suggest that procedurally, perhaps, the thing to do is to vote on Jim, which gives us a starting point. And then if you want to go for any one specific item...
That's fine.
Or you could go home.
Can I just, you know, of all the things we deal with, every year when this thing comes up, I just grimace because I'm very much in line with Bruce's thinking in that if we're going to spend $58,000, I'd really like to amp it up on some of these where I think the community services are far, have a far greater reach and far greater impact. One of the things that this really is, is this, and I'm learning more about it, is that this really isn't about us putting together our list of charities we want to donate to. This is really about, if you do this for us, we'll give you this amount of money. You know, some of these that are in here are, it's a cooperative effort that they're going to perform at Western Wellness, where you can do different things in that regard. And so, and others are things we've just been honestly probably doing for so long that it's just now become part of the fabric of the relationship. So I have to pull my head away from sitting down and looking at a list of charities that were, I think, services, nonprofit organizations that, kind of how I would look at from my own personal, and this is just, this is just a different animal here. I did, Kelly had shared before we voted, just wanted to have her share some information. She'd shared briefly some information on Doctors Care. They just recently had a great article in the newspaper, and it's fantastic news. Kelly, we're not...
I talked to Bebe Kleideman today, and she told me that officially today, the major donor that they have been going after has committed to their significant project to relocate to the building at 609 West Littleton Boulevard. And I did ask her if it was okay if I shared this information. They're in the process of doing their building permits. They'll be spending $3.7 million to purchase the building and do major renovations to 9,000 square feet of it. They'll go with all electronic medical records, and they are just thrilled that they're going to be moving to Littleton Boulevard, so...
Which address?
609.
Oh, thank you.
Three-story building, three-story office building.
It's on the north, north side of Littleton Boulevard.
Or the west corner.
At what?
Up by the, by Wild Ginger, kind of?
No, it's right across the tree from Pyramid Licker.
Oh, is that, it's that house, isn't it? No, that's...
It's to the west of Pyramid Licker.
Yes, yes, that's right. Here, is that here on?
Across the street from Pyramid Licker.
Yeah, to the west.
To the west.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's Fox. It's Littleton and Fox, isn't it?
Whatever it is, it's west.
Okay, we've got a motion to turn it about that. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to amend, to take what had been 2010 contribution to Main Street Players that had not requested anything for this year, rather than going with the 2010 item, that we take that $500 and put it with Doctors Care.
Can, can I suggest that we just, we approve this one and then go back on an individual line item basis?
We approve it, then that's it.
Then that's it.
No, we can reallocate.
Yeah, special dispensation.
I don't know.
It's a, it's going to be a multiple-step process because, is that all right? You okay with that?
Okay. With Ron?
The, the motion right now is to set the 2011 to 2010.
Bottom line?
Pardon?
It's the bottom line is what we're setting?
It's, no, you're setting the, what you're doing is taking the 2010 column and moving it to the 2011. So...
With the exception of Main Street Players?
Well...
We'll have to make that exception as a separate motion. That's what Doug's suggesting.
That's going to be a separate motion.
58, I think Debbie's question was the 58,000 is what you're...
That's what we're doing. We're approving the 58,000.
Yes.
We're not approving the line items.
Yes, you are. And then you can go in and change each individual line item that you want to. But otherwise, we're going to go through and we may end up...
So we approve and then disapprove?
So I move to amend.
Sorry.
Okay. Hang on. What we would do is, that would give us a starting column to go for. Otherwise, we're going to be going through each one of these line items, one by one, which is what we ended up doing last year. So if we want to do that, we can do that. But what I'm recommending is, that Jim's motion is that the first step that we do is set the individual amounts for each line item for 2011 equal to 2010. Then if there's council people that want to then go back and modify a line item for a specific entity, we could do that. But then you are modifying it from a figure that now is under the 2010 column. Does that make sense? Otherwise, we're going to get a whole bunch of amendments to the main motion before we end up voting on the main motion. So...
Why don't we make it a resolution rather than a motion, because then it would be done with. My procedural...
You know, you're going to consider this next week on the agenda and do a formal motion, so...
We don't want to do it that way. But is, is the motion then that complete thing you just said?
Yes.
So that the motion contains examining...
So what the motion means is, is that the 2011 amount for Arapahoe Douglas Men of Health is $10,000. That the 2011 amount for Arapahoe House Detox is $5,000. That the 2011 amount for Doctors Care is $5,000. See where I'm going? All the way down. And then, if somebody wants to adjust up or down individual line items, we go back and do that. But that then gets us everything that we would start at 2011 where we started at 2010.
I hope Wendy understands that motion. Okay.
She will. She will.
All right. All in favor, raise your hands. Phil is opposed, so it's six to one. Okay.
Don't fully understand the process.
All right. Now, you want to change which?
You must have zeroed out. I was, I was going to suggest that since a 2010 allocation for Main Street Players does not have a 2011 request, that we move that item, that amount, keeping the total the same, up to Doctors Care.
Okay. So the motion is from Phil to take 5,000, 500 bucks out of Main Street Players and add $500 to Doctors Care.
Second.
And the discussion should center around on whether that $500 goes to Doctors Care or to another organization?
You can do that, which would...
I'm not going, I'm not going to try moving anyplace else, but I just think that that's where the discussion ought to center around.
Yes.
For this motion.
Yes.
It's not the removal, it's where it goes to.
Well, it's, it's, it's been made as a, as a combined thing. So a discussion on the motion. Because the motion is Main Street minus 500, Doctors Care plus 500. Okay, all in favor of that, raise their hands. It's unanimous. Okay. Is there a motion to a chair? Oh. Bruce?
That was good. That was close.
Don't forget we got announcements.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, we can't.
I would, I'd make a motion to add $1,000 to Arapahoe House Detox and $1,000 to Gateway Battered Women's Shelter. And the first thousand is because they did a, Arapahoe House Detox did a pretty good job of, in my opinion, documenting exactly what they've done vis-à-vis the citizens. And they did request double. I think they're doing good work. I also think we cut the Women's Shelter back a couple of years ago, and I think, given where we landed at the end of 2010, I think we ought to think seriously about starting to try to get them back to more or less what they had been over a period of time. So I guess I would...
Okay, I'm going to reformat that into a real motion in just a second.
Sure.
Before I do that, we're currently at $58,000, and we only have $59,000 budgeted. So, so if, I would suggest that you...
All right, 500 each.
Move to bump up, okay, 500 each is what you want to do?
Yeah, to keep it at a 59. That's fine.
Okay, Bruce is, and Phil is seconding, plus 500 to Detox, and plus 500 to Battered Women's Shelter. Discussion. Council ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, against, so it's six to one. I lose this one. Anyone else? Okay, we're on to announcements. Jim?
Yes. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
There is a tour coming up for Fast Tracks on the west corridor, on the light rail line, and to learn about the land development projects, it's going to be occurring along the corridor. It's on Thursday, February the 24th, going to go from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and then there'll be a reception afterwards at 5:00. Expect that to fill up fairly quickly. If you're interested, let me know, and I can give you the contact information. The second thing is the 2011 Transit Alliance Citizens Academy. The deadline for signing up for that is this Friday. It meets every Wednesday night from 6:00 to 9:00. Starts on March the 2nd, ends on April 13th. And there's no cost because the $1,000 cost for that is being scholarshiped by a funding mechanism of Transit Alliance. But the applications are due this Friday. If you're interested, I've got the contact information as well. And then lastly, the Road Ahead Breakfast is expanding transportation connectivity in the Denver region. It's going to be Friday, March the 4th, from 8:00 to 10:30 a.m. And again, if you're interested in attending that breakfast meeting, I got the information, can give it to you.
Any other business? Where's your...